With the original breach, a technical working group, including engineers and subject matter experts from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, Florida Department of Emergency Management, the Southwest Florida Water Management District, the Army Corps of Engineers, and additional third-party engineers, has been established. This is an important turning point in the event because we now have a federal team, as well as SWIFTMUD, and the state teams, all working together from an engineering and technical perspective. Members of this work group have stationed pumps and pipes to increase output from the reservoir. As of the latest report, water is being discharged at a rate of 23,500 gallons per minute with the increased number of operational pumps. We've been able to slightly increase it. As you recall from earlier briefings, the initial release, controlled release, was through gravity, basically siphon flow pipes. What they have done is they've taken forced water through the pumps, and so as the level has dropped, the amount that siphoned, the volume that would siphon out decreases. They've been able to make up that volume through the existing plumbing through pumps. So they've increased it by about 1,500 gallons per minute. The, at last evening, to give you a perspective, we started off with about 480 million gallons in the southern retention pond. Late last afternoon, early last evening, we were at about 319 million gallons. As of this morning, the estimate is that we are now at 300 million gallons. So we were able to pull out around 19 to 20 million gallons since last evening. The Army Corps of Engineers is leading efforts to develop more detailed, accurate inundation maps to inform decision-makers. That's expected either early this afternoon or later this evening. What's important about that is we now have a broader team to run those models. As the volume drops in the pond, they will be able to rapidly update those inundation or splash maps, which is what has been driving our evacuation areas. The evacuation orders remain in place, and approximately 102 people and pets remain in non-congregate sheltering at local hotels. Congresswoman Buchanan has contacted the EPA, and they have arrived on-site to provide federal assistance. 100,000 bottles of water were delivered to the Bradenton Area Convention Center and are available for use as needed. MCO coordinated the transport of inmates from the jail to nearby correctional facilities on April 5th as a precautionary measure. And Madam Chair, we have the Deputy Secretary of DEP, I think, is zoomed in. This would probably be a good time for him to present his update, and then I will follow. Are we able to get the Deputy Secretary on?
No. Perfect. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can you hear me? This is John Truitt with DEP.
Yes, sir. Mr. Truitt, we sure can. Thank you for joining us this morning.
Yeah, thank you for having me. So I'm up here at the State EOC in Tallahassee. I will actually be down on-site tomorrow for deployment for a while, so I appreciate the opportunity at least to be able to remote in. So as of this morning, I mean, you heard that update. I know I can go into some more details of what we're doing there on top. So there had been three additional submersible pumps installed to move water. The two large 18-inch pumps should be connected and running by early this afternoon. So again, focusing on that moving additional water for the controlled discharge. We have two to three boats a day out in the water collecting water samples. I know on our Protecting Florida Together website, now the sampling page is up as well. I know there's been a lot of questions about that, so that was a lift for the agency to get that, so everyone can access that sampling data to ensure that that's there. There was also a LiDAR overflight yesterday, so light detection and ranging. That is excellent at mapping the topography of a structure. So in that overflight, that data is being compared with the land survey data, so we assure we have a very accurate picture of the actual structure, including the seepage in the east wall. I know with the engineers on the ground, as Dr. Hope's mentioned, there's a large scene of engineers there, multidisciplinary. They have stated clearly that there was no change in the stability of the stack, meaning it's not getting worse, which is good news. And again, with the seepage rates not changing out the side, additionally, that is good news. So the LiDAR, as that flies over and they do that data whenever they need to do it again, that's going to provide the actual most precise technical imagery of the side of that stack and if anything is changing. So that'll help the engineers again in preparing their models and ensuring that everyone is confident in the results that the stability is not changing. Again, we have lots of boots on the ground. Right now, we're also working with multiple innovative technologies. I know some of those were on-site yesterday, figuring out logistics on where they could locate and where they could run pipes. Those technologies or other methods that they can use to treat the water to surface water standards, to again augment the removal of the water from that system. We also sent down yesterday the state geologist and two of his experts. You know, he's down on-site now, looking at the geologic data and assisting with that engineering team. So it is, it's very impressive, truly, an effort that kind of came together with all of the different agencies and all of the different experts, multidisciplinary, to work on this issue. We're very happy to have the engagement we've had with the county and DEM, our federal partners, and I know FWC is working as well. And so it's just, you know, I would like to thank everybody. I'd like to take that moment to thank everybody that's pitched in here. It has been a very big deal. Everyone's come together very, very well, and it's been very impressive to watch. So that was kind of my brief overview, but obviously, I'm happy to answer any questions, if any of you have any.
Yeah. I would like to start off, Mr. Truitt, by just thanking DEP for this board. It has been amazing to be out there. I mean, you know, most of us have been out there every single day for hours on end with this since it started, and, you know, we couldn't ask for a better partner than what all of you at DEP have done. I mean, even Secretary Wallenstein has been here for several days, and, you know, we just thank you for the support, and I would not, cannot leave out all the other departments that are here, emergency management and so forth. I mean, it's just been overwhelming to see the help that has come into Manatee for this, and we thank you very much, Mr. Truitt. I look forward to seeing you again soon, sir.
Tomorrow.
Yes, Madam Chair, looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Administrator. What's next?
If we can bring the next slide up, the inundation map, please. Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is the latest, well, I won't say the latest. This is the inundation map that we had been working with to date with regards to determining evacuation areas. As you can see, going from the darkest blue to no color, the darkest blue is the basically 10 to 20-foot, basically tidal wave, in essence, that was, it was projected a few days ago, which is where we based the expansion of the evacuation areas. And so you can see preliminarily, we were looking at the area to the east and to the southeast as having the major impact, and that's one of the reasons why the jail was not initially evacuated in an abundance of caution as we are transitioning from reliance on HRK's engineers, their third-party engineers, to this team of federal and state engineers and technicians. So that's where I am confident that when the new splash maps and inundation calculations come out, that you will see perhaps a change, and I'll get into that later. Next slide, please. These are the current boundaries of the evacuation area to date. As you can see, on the northern end, it covers the Manatee Grassfield Airport to the north and a very large section of 41. Although 41 has been closed, we have been allowing commercial traffic in and out of the port, which was really a necessity, because had we shut that down, there would be no petrol or gasoline in the gas stations during the weekend. So we have really been working with our business partners to ensure that we maintain the local economy. Now, this is an important, this was an important transition that occurred yesterday, and principally, I know when we talked Thursday, when you adopted the initial resolution for the local emergency, we had planned on having a whole field of experts here. Now those experts are out in the field. When they determined yesterday that the site was safe, they moved all the command centers up to be proximate to Piney Point. And so this is the organizational chart that was adopted last night for a unified command structure. So you see how all the agencies come together, their responsibilities, and also in communications. So we will now have a unified communications. This team will determine and make joint decisions. The soundbite, so to speak, the public communications will now be coordinated, and we will all be on the same page, and we can talk about that from an execution perspective after the meeting, or if you have any questions one-on-one. I am, I cannot express how impressed I am at how everyone in the county, the state agencies, the tipping point was truly when the commission acted together swiftly, and you took a position Thursday, because that sent off a, basically a cascade effect of getting the attention across the agencies. And as you know, by Saturday, we had a full team of experts and leaders locally and state, and then with Congressman Buchanan's help, the EPA has an observer down here. So we could not have accomplished what has been accomplished had it not been for you initiating that first order, which really gave us a head start on the situation, because as you recall, there was no evident breach when you made that decision on Thursday. But by Friday, everything had changed, and that 20-hour head start allowed our Public Safety Department to develop a plan, an evacuation plan, a response plan, and so you should all be commended for that, as is our staff. On the EOC state and partner actions to date, the local state of emergency, as you know, was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on April 1st, April Fool's Day, my first day.
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate the challenge.
[laughing]
And Governor DeSantis declared a state of emergency for Manatee County on Saturday, April 3rd, around midday. DEP and FDEM have teams collated, co-located in the Manatee County EOC, as well as up at the site. They will help to lead the response to the incident. The Manatee County EOC remains at a Level 1 full activation, with all emergency support functions reporting to the EOC. I do believe that that may change later in the date, when we get the determination that we may no longer be at risk of a full breach, but let's just stand by for that. FDEM coordinated the deployment of approximately 26 pumps to help release water from the reservoir. Those of you that saw it either live or saw it on video, it was a pretty impressive site to move that much equipment that quickly with substantial assets from the National Guard and the lift helicopters and the like. The, there are two drone teams that are currently operating, providing live feed. Team 1 flies drones once an hour around the berm. The drones have the capability to detect small-scale changes in the berm structure. Team 2 flies drones constantly to provide a real-time look at conditions at the breach site and other areas. What is, was most impressive to me is that DEP's drones have thermal imaging capabilities, so they were able to scan through the night. And you may recall, there was some concern Saturday night, I think it was, at about 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning, where there was a significant differentiation of temperature, and they thought it may have been a leak, but it was dark. What is astounding is that when the teams were ready, were able to get out there in daylight, it actually was a particular type of vegetation, which was changing the thermal imagery, and so fortunately, it was a plant and not a leak, but that is how sensitive that equipment was in helping us to monitor that structure even at night. This may be diff, where are our slides? Oh, there we go. This is probably difficult to read. We can make sure that you each get a copy, but I will briefly go through the resources that were deployed, which is just amazing how when agencies come together in a coordinated fashion with a common mission. Brought in six-inch, 15, 15, 16-inch pumps, of course, the command team, one 8-inch pump, three 10-inch pumps, two 18-inch pumps. There are eight VAC trucks, pump trucks on scene, two additional pump trucks on scene, LSA sanitation pack, one, the chief for the command team, additional 8-inch pump, additional 12-inch pump, 4-inch pump, two additional 8-inch pumps, a rotating crane. I don't know if you saw that, that video, but those cranes were able to go up and help reposition those pumps on the berm. I mean, none of this would have occurred had the governor not stepped in and really just authorized whatever it took and got it down here in a matter of hours. Obviously, two large Chinook helicopters, the Chinook 47 and Chinook 60, from the Florida Air Guard, the LSA operations team that is on-scene, that task force, and the list goes on with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, Collier County, LiDAR Drone Services, which has been dramatic in operating 24 hours a day. EPA specialist, the representative from the Federal Environmental Protection Agency is an observer. There is no federal command at this point. They're just there to observe, and should there need to be any assistance, they're readily available. As you heard from the Deputy Secretary, we now have one of the state geologists that has expertise in these stacks, and additional vehicles have been brought in. Goals moving forward, next slide, please. Ensure safety, and this is first and foremost, this is what we've been dealing with in this crisis mode, to ensure safety of the public and the staff working to mediate the situation. Property conservation, finish deploying pumps and other mitigation efforts to remove as much water from the reservoir as possible to avoid structural collapse. And an important note here, all of this water is not going into the bay. We have been fortunate that Mosaic has been providing tanker trucks, and 24 hours a day, water is being diverted, which would have gone into the bay, going into those trucks. Those trucks are then taking it to Mosaic sites where they process it. There are additional mitigation that's taking place now, and many of you were aware of the company that's been on-site at the port and throughout the northern part of the county that provide portable storage tanks, so that we can move more water into storage, so that it can be processed, so that it doesn't end up in the bay. In addition to that, because it's not in the slides, the, all of the water that's breaching out of the side that is flowing in what now is somewhat of a canal, with the state's assets and some of these pumps, it is being diverted around the stack, then being pumped and lifted into another channel, and it is going into, there is a 35-million-gallon pond that has a liner in it that has not been used on the Piney Point site. So everything that's coming out of the bottom is staying on the site. That is not going into the bay. What is going into the bay is principally the salt water and the brackish water that was removed from the bay and being stored. In addition, on the goals moving forward, and this is the critical factor, is to get our economic drivers back online through the US-41 thoroughfare and businesses impacted by the evacuation order. I know a number of commissioners have gotten calls from our various businesses that operate in the area, and including our agricultural industry. I have been following up with all of them personally. We have made arrangements so that those companies that need critical functions can get in there, and that's in coordination with the state to ensure that we are as accommodating as possible. As I mentioned, I think we're going to have some quite positive news. We do have farmers who have crops that have to be picked, they have to get to processing plants. We've made some arrangements today for one of those farmers to get his green beans and potatoes into the processing plant, and hopefully, he will be able to stay on track to harvest his fields tomorrow as essential providers, in addition to one of the chemical plants that obviously needs to get chemicals, because those chemicals are being used on-site, so they have to get to his customers so that they can turn around and bring in the product to destabilize, to stabilize some of this water. So we are really doing all we can. Karen has been an incredible asset and resource in working with all of our businesses in the area. In addition to remediate any negative environmental impacts due to the release of water, I will show you at the end of this, the locations where we, as a county, have monitoring points, both in the bay and in the proximate area. That's in addition to what the state is doing. And I will tell you, and either in the recess, we'll run the video that the Sheriff's Department made when I went out to look at the site, and you'll see the minimal flow that is sort of staying in the proximate area. So we're being very sensitive to the environment, obviously, regardless of all the help we're getting from out of the area. This is our environment, this is our community, and we've been very direct in, we needed to reduce the risk of a full breach, but at the same time, we needed the minimal amount of this water going into the bay with a potential impact on both our local economy and environment. We continue to assess the berm and maintain situational awareness on the breach site and to determine and address any unmet equipment or personnel needs. And with that, do we have, do we have the map, Charlie? Could we, I guess, we can put it on the overhead. I want to make it clear, you know, both to the public and to the commissioners, that this is not just about, you know, getting rid of this water. We're very sensitive to the environment, and our folks in our lab are independently, as you can see, and Charlie, you can go ahead and walk them through the various points and what's taking place in our monitoring program. Thank you.
Thank you. As you can see on the screen, of course, some orientation, of course, this is I-75, leading to 275 to the Sunshine Skyway. Of course, the port is here, the stack, this stack of management is right in this location, and we are monitoring a former discharge at Piney Point Creek that discharged was ended on Sunday morning, and it's a dry ditch at the moment. We're also making sure that we're capturing any possible release that could have come to Bishop Harbor through this sampling point, this location, but we now know with the on-site management that this release will not occur as well. As to the actual releases where they're going, to Port Manatee, we look at first the discharge point from the stacks immediately, then we sample inside the port itself at berth 12, and also at the discharge point, and then into, you know, this is a 40-foot-deep channel where the water, as we would believe, would be moving in this channel out to the Tampa Bay Shipping Channel, where we have two sampling points, north and south. We also look just to the immediate side of the shipping channel for movement in this location of the environment, and also the two nearshore points at 361 and 366. These are sampling points that we have maintained throughout the years, so we have a strong background condition evaluation and are able to measure any trends or detect the changes that we anticipate will occur over the long period of time. And the sampling, as Dr. Hope's mentioned, is in addition to sampling points also being arrayed by Pinellas County, sampling points arrayed by Hillsborough County above the county line, sampling points by the Tampa Bay Estuary Program, and others, in addition to our state partners. The local efforts are being coordinated, I might add, quite well through the Tampa Bay Estuary Program in their role. Ed Sherwood is here as Executive Director to answer any questions after the presentation as to the monitoring efficacy that we have in Manatee County. But I believe with this array, certainly, we're able to watch and monitor any changes, both short-term and long-term to the bay environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir?
I think, given the agenda, what I would suggest is we can put online the video. What I will do is summarize for you. I did go up and personally view the site with the Sheriff's Department's helicopter yesterday afternoon at incoming tide, which would be the period which, where we would see the most discharge that would be held near shore. And I can tell you, I've been sailing and boating in this bay for more than 30 years, and I've seen it by air and by sea, and the outflow from the port to the south and to the north was minimal from a visual perspective. I don't have the analysis, but just visually, at a point where you would see the most accumulation, it was pretty limited. Unfortunately, there are grass flats in there, but based on the aerial, it appeared that the environment was absorbing what was being discharged. As you know, it's being discharged at about 40 feet of depth, with the intent that it would be carried in the ship channel and not find its way into the primary estuaries and those nursery beds where you've got the greatest concern. So I can, we'll make that available, haven't edited or anything, but if you would like for the public, we can obviously show it during the lunch break or something like that. But with that, that's my direct presentation. Everybody's, you know, pretty focused on this. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. I'm just going to make, add a little bit to what you said. I wanted the commissioners to all know, first of all, I want to thank this board. I can tell you that, I mean, I know of commissioners that were there all weekend, spent many, many hours, some on-site, of Piney Point. The commission has been extremely involved, and I'm very thankful, and I just want to say thank you for that. Second of all, I do want to mention real quick for all the commissioners, just to get a full report, as most of you now know, I sent you the email. Senate President Wilton Simpson and Senator Jim Boyd has really just been wonderful to work with, and they did call me yesterday afternoon to let me know that a press release was coming out, where they are working with the legislature for up to 200 million, to make sure that this never happens again at Piney Point. It will be closed when it's all said and done. Those stacks will be emptied and sealed, so I'm thrilled about that. Can't say enough about the governor, you know, coming here and showing all the help that he's done. I mean, he has been wonderful, all of the different departments. I mean, I speak on behalf of the board when I just say thank you, it's been overwhelming. It's been amazing. I did get a phone call yesterday from Senator Rubio, you know, just letting me know if there was anything we needed, that he was there. I've also talked to Senator Scott, he's called several times, asking if there was any way that the feds could help. Congressman Buchanan, as you know, was there yesterday, but I would be also remiss if I didn't say thank you to county staff, who has worked 24 hours a day on this. You know, Dr. Hope, you come in here, and I think You know, Dr. Hope, you come in here, and I think you had been official maybe an hour, you know, if I'm not mistaken, when you inherited this state of emergency for Piney Point, you have been tremendous. You've been there almost continuously. I have been in many press conferences where you have spoken, and you've just done a great job. And I know that you've tried to keep the board informed as well, and I thank you for all your hard work. Karen, you aced it.
Karen, it's Karen.
You know, you did a great job. I know that you worked with a lot of businesses trying to get things taken care of, because there were a lot of businesses that had to close and walk away, and that's been very hard. The residents in Manatee County who have had to evacuate, I think, well, I think you said it's now up to 102, county staff has been tremendous at trying to make sure that these citizens have, you know, everything that they need to be able to wait out this endeavor. So I am excited and hope that we do hear something more on that later today. We, you know, we're just all overwhelmed with everything that's taken place. So Commissioner Whitmore, you're first, please, and then Commissioner Cruz.
Dr. Hope, thank you. You did an excellent presentation. You did excellent all this weekend. You've been on top of it, and I really attribute that to your experience in emergency management, your career at Tampa General for emergency management, an epidemiologist. And what better to have somebody that actually knows about science to kind of run this show? So I very much appreciate it, and thank you for keeping us all informed. As many of you know, my daughter got married this weekend, so I was up in Tampa, and for some weird reason, which means somebody's following us, I was watching Bob Hareigan ABC 7 in Tampa. I mean, I'm going, I thought, I'm never going to see what's happening, and it was all live. So I don't know how, in our room, I don't know if they're following me on 5G or what, but anyway, so I watched the whole thing live, I watched the press conferences, and thank you for keeping us up to date. I did want to ask a question. So the state of emergency, so we have the Florida Department of Emergency here, also the DEP and Public Safety has formed a unified command, and those were probably the ones that were in that room with the blinds closed all day, that nobody was allowed in.
They were planning, they were planning.
They were planning, and I heard when they did plan, somebody said they came out with a plan and said, "Do it." So they are ultimately in charge, correct, right now under the governor?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I got that impression when, I didn't even see the whites of their eyes.
They tell me what to do now.
Yeah, they tell you what to do now. Okay, I just have a question. I didn't, I'd heard about this, but I think it's good for the public to know, because you had hit on something that's very important, I think, to a lot of people, the environmentalists, as well as the people in the neighborhood, about the water being tanked off. And do you know approximately how much is being tanked off by Mosaic, and also, how much is actually, so many of us have been through the Bishop's Harbor issue and the Frog Creek when it went into our bay. Do you, I mean, maybe not now, but maybe later, if you don't have that information, could you give us an update? Because that's really important for the public. And just so you know, our berth is 42 feet, even though it's 40, but we had to do two extra just because, and I think the shipping channels are 50 feet. So that's good news, because the currents are taking them there, but can you tell us about the water? I mean, what's, how much is being trucked off by Mosaic and our storage tanks? It's real, I think a lot of people are asking.
Right. The proposal that we've been working on with a company out of Wyoming that does this in the oil industry and the petrol industry that have these portable holding tanks, they have given us one preliminary engineering design, if we're able to use the Piney Point site, which I believe by mid-afternoon, we're going to get the go-ahead, that it's safe enough, that they have given us an engineering design where 150 million gallons can be stored in these portable tanks on the Piney Point site.
Great.
So if you're looking at a little less than 300 million gallons that's left in that pool, they've got tanks available that they can ship in overnight from Pennsylvania and Texas to get started on assembling them. So as soon as one tank is assembled, they put them together in panels and liners. The state has provided enough pumps that they can begin pumping and filling those tanks. I want to say that the number, I think it was in the presentation this morning, is 23,500 gallons a minute of the water on the top. And what's important is the water on the bottom that's coming out and the water that's being pumped into the Mosaic tank trucks is the, what you would consider the water that had the most dissolved solids in it. And so really, you know, fortunately, all of this is not good, but the water that is going into the bay, which is around that 23,000 gallons a minute, is basically the salt-brackish water that's at the top of the tank. Those of you that went out, you saw the ducks and the snook and all that swimming in there. It is far more conducive to being able to be absorbed in the marine water environment. I'll get you calculations on what's being trucked out, but as I said, they've got trunks, and those of you that have been at the site, you saw the trucks. I mean, they're going in and out, they're taking, you know, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of gallons per hour in being trucked out in addition. So I think we're going to see, over the course of the next few days, a decrease of what's going in the bay now that they know that they can begin to start filling that 35 million-gallon lined retention pond. The goal is to keep as much of this onsite as possible. When the Deputy Secretary was referring to some of these more innovative and advanced technologies, they've already signed a contract, that's why we had to get into Allied to get some of those chemicals out to do reverse osmosis. And, you know, reverse osmosis is a big scale. You can bring it all the way down to like almost distilled drinking water quality, or you can say, "Look, we want reverse osmosis to take it to this point so that it matches the water in the bay." And they do that through various filtration systems and things like that. So that's going to be taking place onsite at Piney Point. They'll be using reverse osmosis. There are, I think, three other technologies from different companies that DEP and Emergency Management has contracted with for various other ways to pretreat the water and prepare it. In addition to that, their Mosaic has offered up their tankers and their barges to pump it out of the port. Carlos, our port director, has been incredible over the duration of this. He too has been pretty much 24 hours a day. As soon as, as soon as, and I pushed pretty hard, and as soon as we got the go-ahead from DEP and Emergency Management Services to consider tankers and barges, the port worked through engineering how they would get the water and bypass the water that's in the canal that's being discharged in the port to be able to pump that water into the barges and the tankers. And you can't make this up, but believe it or not, there's something called the Jones Act, and the, basically, the deal that was cut by DEP was that we could put it on barges and tankers, we could take it to a company in Louisiana on the coast that does this for oil refineries and use their deep injection wells to dispose of it. But the Jones Act basically says that if you're moving freight from one US port to another US port, you need to use a US-flagged ship.
Oh, yeah.
That works great if you're trying to protect our local US-flagged ships owned by US companies to move the freight, but in a state of emergency, given Mosaic ships are flagged in another country, we have to get some kind of emergency federal waiver. So that's it. So we are really looking at, and it's important for the public to know, and I appreciate the question, that we're trying to get as much of this in other modalities other than discharging it in the bay.
My last question or comment, and then I think you'll have to tell us later, but we've got the other cells that have, like you had said earlier in a briefing, that are less conducive to our surrounding environment.
Yes.
And you probably can't, and I'm sure it's the DEP and the experts that are over at EOC now, and the engineers, can you give us an update whenever later, what we're going to do with that? Because once we take all the water out, I had others say, "Well, is that going to compromise the other cells?" And I don't know, but if somebody could give us that information, I know it's too early, we're trying to prevent this other issue from happening.
Right, and that's exactly, what's taking place right now is preparation for those other holding ponds, and that's why you have these water treatment, because before that water leaves to go anywhere, it has to be treated.
Got it.
Because of its acidity and alkalinity and ammonia and nitrates.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah, just a couple of things real quick. One, I don't think the other cells really are independent of what we're dealing with now. I think this is a one-site problem that needs to be fixed. It's a tyranny, well, we've got the boots on the ground and the people here, so.
Different phases.
Correct, different phases, but they all interconnect.
Absolutely.
You know, what we're doing with this first one is going to impact what we do with the other two. My two quick questions. One, you showed us all the different water test areas. Are we making that data public anyplace where people can see our test results and just, you know, you're saying visually, everything looks great, and we're putting the salt water from the top into the bay and essentially taking the other water that's coming from the bottom and storing it elsewhere. Do we have data on that that just shows people?
The reports are coming in. As you may recall, when some of us went out to the port, we saw DEP was doing water sampling before the discharge began, and they've been currently doing it. So I think it's a good idea to post that. I suspect today they're going to be releasing it. Another important note, Madam Chair, is that there was, you know, a lot of questions raised in the public and in the press about radioactivity and things like that, and there currently are no measurable or below the threshold of radium-226. The state has sent down, from the Florida Department of Health, their radial, you know, the nuclear testing folks, we won't have those results, and that's principally for the other ponds, but they're going to measure it in all of them to determine what's in there. So I do believe we can make that available publicly.
If I might add to your question, Commissioner Cruz, this came up yesterday, and just for your information, Nick Azera did send over to
Yeah, Charlie?
Waterkeepers, the place where they could check for the water quality.
So Madam Chair, if you'd like, Charlie has some data on the sampling?
I don't have the numeric data, but I wanted to let the public know that the record of water quality as it exists today is on the Tampa Bay Estuary Program website, and again, as coordinators for Pinellas, Hillsborough, and Manatee Sampling, we're feeding all of our results, which are public record, but we're feeding our results to the Tampa Estuary Program. We're going to be managing the publication of this data in real time as it's available, as record.
So perhaps what we can do is on our website around Piney Point, we can have a link that directs them to their site, if that will work.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, my only other question, and then we can move on. The inundation map, you said now we have new engineers focused on the numbers. When did you think that was going to be updated?
Sometime today.
Today. All right, yeah, because the inundation map, and just, because we just posted it up today, and I saw people taking pictures of the screens, that's the inundation map from the original, correct? That was the one that Wood put together on Saturday.
And that was probably, I would say, that was probably calculated based on 400, 425 million gallons, and we're less than 300 now, or right at 300 now?
Correct. That's the one where, when a few of us were up on the stacks, the engineer ran us off saying we're going to fall, and we thought there was going to be like an action movie of a wave coming behind us.
I'm hoping early this afternoon, I'm hoping early this afternoon.
Okay, because for abundance of caution, I get it. You know, we're talking about 20-foot waves, we're talking about, "Let's evacuate everyone and shut down 41," but that was based upon more water.
Correct.
By definition, the less water we have in there, the less it's going to impact the surrounding area.
Correct.
And some of those areas, like 41, were barely impacted, and again, abundance of caution, we extended it a bit to the west of it and shut down 41, just to be, rather be safe than sorry. But now, I'm presuming now we've basically drained almost 40% of the water, right, from 480 to 300 roughly?
Right.
Or at least soon 300. So that's about 40% of the water gone. I have to assume that's pretty substantial, and we have a lot of meaningful commercial that is right on the cusp, you know, not just commercial, but things like the port and things like the jail.
Right.
That are right, barely there, abundance of caution, I'm guessing this is going to minimize this. And also, let's remember, when we first ran this model, almost no residences were affected. At first, it was 20 homes, and then we reran the model and increased it to 310 or something like that.
Right.
So I'm just, I'm hopeful that we were able to run this model with updated information, updated water counts, and be able to let people, because at the end of the day, the issue we're dealing with is onsite, and we have to expand that radius for safety purposes, but we don't want to expand that radius endlessly because we're displacing companies, displacing residences. As long as it's safe to move people back in, we want to be able to continuously update that for people. So I was just curious, you said later today?
Yes, sir, and a lot has gone into this in the past 24 hours with regards to updating those calculations, because as you know, the initial calculations were coming from the third-party engineering firm, and they were using their geologists and hydrologists to run these various models. Now we have the full support of the federal Army Corps of Engineers and SWIFT-MUD, et cetera, so we'll be able to run those calculations quicker. But my expectation is, as you know, that those of you who've been out there, the sides of it are sloped, so not only are you reducing the depth, but you're reducing the surface area as we've dropped. And currently, the level now is down below 60 feet, which was, which is a substantial, you know, drop in both depth and surface area. So as I said, I'm hopeful that the new data that will have been analyzed this morning and will come out in the afternoon, that we will be able to, most likely, be able to report that we're moving out of that critical stage of potential full breach to something that's far better contained, and the risk level, I think, will be lower this afternoon at the rate that we're going.
Perfect, thanks. And by the way, just to reiterate what Commissioner Whitmore said, you're doing an amazing job. We really appreciate it. And I know we kind of threw you in this minutes after we appointed you, but I do really appreciate all the time and effort and expertise you're adding to this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Dr. Hope, I would like to echo what some of my fellow Commissioner Cruz said regarding local businesses in getting those people open again, and, you know, our residents who work their, back to their, you know, their jobs and their ability to provide for their family as soon as it is safely possible. You know, if you're a waitress at Poppy's Place, you're not getting comp time. You're just losing out. So as soon as it's safe, let's open those businesses back up. I'd like to, of course, thank the governor for all of the resources that he brought me, literally brought in Chinook helicopters with supplies. So I'd like to thank Governor DeSantis, thank DEP as well for the support they've lent. Dr. Hope, you've done an amazing job. We have clearly picked the right person to sit in that seat. You know, you didn't even know where the coffee pot was. This started Friday, Good Friday, and you and I and Mr. Clegg were the only people left in the building, and we're in your office, and I looked around at one point during a WebEx with, you know, the brass from Tallahassee, and realized you don't even have a picture hanging on the wall in here. You literally have nothing in the office. You probably still don't, I'm sure. I'd also like to thank my fellow commissioners, who were all, you know, there in the war room over the weekend, on a holiday weekend. Chair Baugh as well. You, you know, before I even took office, you were really driving this issue to me and making me aware of the importance of it for our county, and you've been trying to drive a solution since November, since I've been here, that's for sure. Karen Stewart, you have been a fantastic asset to this county, and you and Jake Sauer and Carlos at the port, everyone seemed to immediately respect the office that you had taken. They barely knew you and had a relationship with you, but they respected the office, and that's a credit to them, the time they put in. We had drone operators out there who have spent, you know, like 48 hours without sleep, constantly staring at a screen, you know, trying to operate drones so that we knew we had a live feed at Emergency Command, and so that we knew what was going on. Public Works, Chad and Tony and about five of his guys were out there at 2:00 in the morning, literally trying to shove rock that Mosaic gave us into the hole under, you know, lights with generators.
And refueling those, and refueling those lights.
Right, at the bottom of the levee, while everybody else has been evacuated out of the area, and they're in there with front loaders trying to, you know, trying to, you know, sort of save.
Putting their lives in danger, I might add.
Absolutely, yeah, that's what I'm trying to get to, is that they put their lives in danger. Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get to, is that they put their lives in danger at 2:00 in the morning on Easter weekend, trying to cram free rock into the hole. So, you know, people like that, Jeff at Mosaic, he's sort of been the one guy with his finger in this dam for how many years up to this point, and has, you know, done a great job of keeping this from happening up to this point. Senator Boyd now is committed to helping us all the way to the end with this property. And I know, you know, Robinson and Gregory will be as well. The sheriff, we threw him into the fire, obviously, but, you know, he was a tremendous help as well. You know, to the staff and the people, and the people of this county, I would tell you that oftentimes, unfortunately, it takes a disaster to bring people together. And that certainly happened with this board and with this government this weekend. It's unfortunate that it took a disaster to do that, but it was a different, it was certainly a different feeling and a different mood, I would say, since we declared a declaration of emergency since that point. So I'm hoping that that continues, that, you know, feeling of cohesiveness and the way we've been working together. I do hope that that continues from this point on. And to folks in the community, obviously, we're getting a lot of emails and a lot of hate. I would say that, you know, now is not the time for any sort of finger pointing. The build, I kind of have the analogy of this took place in Manatee County. However, this was not authorized by us in any way. Doesn't matter just right now who did authorize it, but it's sort of like we're the firefighters that were called in to help and support private property owners and the state agencies. And so our people were sort of, we're like the firefighters running into the building trying to put the fire out. And sometimes it feels like people are throwing rocks at us as we're running into the building trying to save people and shouting us down, you know, and wanting to know how the fire started. Well, the fire's not out yet, so until we reach that point, I don't think we move into that next phase. Right now, we're still trying to prevent what could be a much worse disaster. I would also like to, when I'm finished, if Dr. Hope would address this, there has been some misinformation in the media, which I know is not a new thing, you know, obviously. But I'd like to address some of it, because I've seen some sort of, I would call it clickbait headlines, which included words that I think unnecessarily scared people and I would certainly say misinformed people. Words like radioactive, arsenic. The word toxic is thrown around constantly. So if you could just describe, we've already, we've done it multiple times, but I feel like we can't beat this drum enough. You know, obviously, we're dealing with a column of chemistry in that stack. What we're pumping out at the top is, you know, rainwater, saltwater. It's the least of the evils, I would say. I'm not saying it's great, but it's the least of the evils. But we're dealing with mainly nutrients, high levels of nutrients is mainly the big concern. Not radioactivity, not arsenic, right? So I want to finish, if you'll address that. But so what we're putting into Tampa Bay is the least of the evils, and what's draining out of the bottom of the site, obviously, you know, gravity will pull the heavier stuff to the bottom, the more concentrated material to the bottom. And that, what's leaking out of the bottom, but we're containing that on the site. So I think that's important to explain. So if you would take over from that point. Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
And I appreciate the comments and really the questions. First and foremost, the water that's being discharged is not radioactive. That's according to the state and all their measurements. They will be getting detailed data on what levels are in there. And what's interesting, and I think a majority of the commissioners, if not all of you, have been up there and have looked in that pool, and there are no algae blooms on that water, and it didn't have air raid or pumps on it, recirculators or anything. It is, for all practical purposes, a small lake that's at the highest level in Manatee County, and we saw, you know, flocks of ducks, fish, snook, et cetera, and no algae, no red tide, there were no dead fish floating on top. And so what's important, as you mentioned, is what is going into the bay is not toxic. It is marine life sustaining. It has sustained marine life for years without any kind, and the nutrients are there. So the nutrients are at levels which do not, are not resulting in an algae bloom, et cetera, in that man-made pond. It is mostly rainwater. It's residual saltwater from the dredging project at the port. And at the bottom of it, it does have some of the silt that came out of the port, which came out of the bay. And that's what's important. I mean, I know the national news, look, it is a big problem. I mean, the other ponds on that property and the property in and of itself is a problem. It is a wastewater compound. We do have everyone's attention from Washington DC to Tallahassee, down to the regional level, SWIFT MUD, and a majority of what we're dealing with is being contained onsite. And the nutrient levels, we'll get the data that has been, you know, from the water samples that have been collected. And so it's not radioactive. It is currently sustaining marine life, healthy marine life. And if you recall, you looked into it, and it's like a, it's like a mountain lake, you know, a saltwater lake. So there has been a tremendous amount of misreporting, but that in and of itself, it is a wastewater, an industrial wastewater site from prior production of fertilizer. And what's important to note is it's not Manatee County. This is a private company that has been operating under the regulatory oversight of the State Department of Environmental Protection and the US Department of Environmental Protection. And your analogy as a firefighter and the fire department is spot on. We had to react as the local governing body in order to protect our citizens and our businesses. And this is, we didn't create the problem, nor were we responsible for solving the problem. You know, we're reporting it, and we're being transparent to the public. And you're right, the media, you know, in many instances, has twisted this into something that it currently is not. And I do believe we've gotten enough attention that this administration, this county commission, will preside over the end of this saga so that generations to come do not have to deal with it. We've got that commitment. Each of you got that commitment from the governor, from Congressman Vern Buchanan. Senator Scott and Senator Rubio have been in touch with us. They're committed to do whatever it takes. So I think we just need to be focused on the windshield and forget about the rearview mirror for right now, and continue what we're doing, which is motivating those who are empowered to solve this problem and ensure that we don't have to address it anytime in the future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hope, and that was really well put. I also want to make it clear that I'm not trying to downplay this.
Right.
From what it is. It is large amounts of nutrients in the water, but it is not, you know, our turtles aren't going to turn into Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles. You know, that's kind of important to note.
And we're throttling the flow. And we're, we're only releasing out what needs to be released, and I think we'll see a decrease in that as we progress throughout the week.
Right. And, you know, on that note, that it's not toxic, it's not radioactive, it's high in nutrients. That said, I understand the seriousness of putting nutrient-rich water into the bay. My district, I represent the majority of the coastline in this county. My district contains all of the beaches in this county. But I also want to make it clear to the media and people at home that the water on those beaches is clean. You can swim in, absolutely swim in that water. It is still pristine and beautiful and blue. Restaurants, hotels, Airbnbs, businesses open on Anna Maria Island. It will continue to be open. There is absolutely zero risk in swimming on those beaches in Anna Maria Island, nor is there any risk in the fish that are being caught in Tampa Bay or in the Gulf of Mexico. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner, thank you for making that statement, because a lot of people are questioning that. It's sad. Commissioner Satcher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to go over and point out some of the things I've seen as far as the decision-making matrix. I'll go back to November from the standpoint of this board. So this board has voted to make Ponty Point before any of this happened, before there was this leak. We voted to make this our number-one legislative priority to fix this, to ask wherever we could, to get any help we could. And the truth is, it is private property, not owned by us, but it affects our residents. And so I just wanted to speak to Manatee County, to the people here in this area, and say, we hear you. We understand that our water quality is of utmost importance, and we need safety, and we need to feel good about where we live and the place where we are. And so that's why we made it number one. Unfortunately, it's been there a long time, since literally the 60s. And so as we're moving and trying to get this taken care of, the wall literally started to shift. The dam literally started to move with a serious threat of it coming down. And so you have to change the decisions that you're making right then and there and make those people safe, you know, and be sure that no one ends up with this apocalyptic 20-foot wall of water over their house. And so the county acted fast, this board acted fast, and made those decisions, and I'm pleased to see that. And now we're at a stage, and hopefully by this afternoon, we'll have official word from the best engineers in the country, that we don't have to worry as much about that wall moving. And once we get to that, and we're already making plans, we're going to shift to keeping as much of that water out of the bay as possible. And any of the water that does go to the bay, we're going to do everything we can to make it as clean as possible, because there are things that we can do with the reverse osmosis, et cetera. So I know, believe me, I've got a Tea Party background. I understand that government so many times is the problem and not the solution. But I want you to know that in this case, nobody's trying, as far as I know, nobody's trying to hide anything. Nobody's trying to do something underhanded. This is a situation we inherited, and we stepped up to the plate and said, who cares whose fault it is? Who cares what position? This is where we are now. We've got to take care of this right now. The other thing along those lines that I wanted to speak about is the governor. Talk about stepping up to the plate. You know, since his election, he has made it a priority to take care of the environment here in Florida.
Amen.
From the Everglades to natural springs, he has not spared any expense or any concern. He's put the best and brightest on keeping our environment, our beaches, clean and taking care of our environment. And when this situation arose, the same thing. He showed up here, he sent his best people. He did not say, this is a Manatee County problem, forget it. He did not say, you know, this is EPA, forget it. No, he sent Chinook helicopters to put pumps on top of that wall when they thought the wall might fall. And he stepped up to the plate, still continuing to do that. He has shown himself to be a friend to the Florida voters, to the Florida citizens, and to Manatee County. So I wanted to thank him for that. And last of all, I just wanted to say, you know, I was in that room when that first and worst inundation map came out. So we're there, and this map comes up, and you're talking 20-foot wall of water. And everyone got quiet, and everyone's eyes got big. And I realized that it was time, you know, I sit on this board, I'm honored to do that, but I also realized, okay, but I was a pastor for a long time. And so we literally, as a group, I said, we need to pray there with the engineers and the FDP and everyone, and no one argued. We needed the Lord's help, and I think it would be, it'd be wrong for us not to thank Him that that wall stayed when everything in the natural looked like it was going to move and continue to move. That wall is held, and I'm hoping, and it looks, it looks like it's going to continue to do that. So I literally will take this opportunity to thank the Lord for that. And obviously, county staff, you guys have been absolutely great in putting, you know, life and limb and on the line for the people. So we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Servia?
Yes, good morning, everyone. I have to echo the same from my colleagues. It's just been such a wonderful partnership to address this matter as quickly as we have. Thank you, Mr. Truitt, for being here today. Thank you to our governor, Congressman Buchanan, for everyone who has mobilized efforts and money to come to Manatee County and help us address this decades-old chemical plant, you know, that Manatee County has not been responsible for, but we're certainly involved in because it lies within our community. And so although it's been a legislative priority for years and years, sometimes it does take a crisis to finally put that foot forward and decide to address it. And so I thank everyone, our local staff, who's been working 24/7. Dr. Hope, you've done an amazing job. I'm really, really proud of the efforts. And this is another example of these unexpected crises that sometimes hit local governments and that you have to be ready to address in an instant. And everyone's just done a really great job, thanks mostly to the state of Florida and the federal government and their resources. I do have a couple of questions. The first one is regarding the rainy season. You know, we are weeks away from hurricane season, and in the event that we get a big rain event in the coming couple of months, I just wonder, what is the plan that the state has for ensuring that this pond doesn't fill back up? And maybe Mr. Truitt can address that. And then I also am so pleased that we have these monitoring stations out in Bishop Harbor and Tampa Bay, because that is such a precious resource that is fragile, and these nutrients can have a big impact if we're not really, really careful. Are we also monitoring the seagrasses in the area? So those are my two questions.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, thank you, Commissioner Servia. With regards to mitigation for rainwater, as you may recall, I've got an airline pilot license, so I like, love to watch weather. And I was crossing my fingers every time I went online to look at the fronts, hoping that we did not have substantial rainfall. I do believe that that is part of what DEP is looking at. There are obviously a number of resources. So the same pumping systems and the water flow system to maintain that on the Ponty Point site can help us accommodate that. Every day that we don't have to deal with that is one day we get ahead of that. But now that we've got a full team of engineers and other experts, I will ask them to incorporate and document in a plan for us if there's anything that the county needs to do with regards to those events. So I appreciate you bringing that up. And the last question?
Was, oh, grass flats, grass flats, something.
The grass flats. I will tell you that, and they've been doing it on their own. I was under the assumption that the University of South Florida College of Marine Sciences, which is based at USF St. Pete campus, that they were under engagement with one of the other agencies or entities, but apparently they are not. But I did have a conversation with Dr. Robert Weisberg, who is one of the experts in this area with regards to the water flow, et cetera. And I know the dean of the College of Marine Sciences was on the morning news. So I will follow up with them as well as Moat Marine. I do know that DEP is also, that's on their radar as well. So I will get a report back to all of you with regards to what's being done with those nursery grounds, those grass beds, and grass flats.
Charlie Hunskey again. I might add that, yes, we are pulling.
Charlie, can you take your mask off? It's hard to understand you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I might add that in addition to pulling samples from the water itself, we are also pulling samples from the bottom, the bottom muds. We call it the bentex sampling, but from the bottom to trace and follow the accumulation of any material there. And we are watching and doing the sweeps on the seagrass monitoring and its relative health throughout this wide distribution area. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Whitmore?
Just real quick, my only comment was to Commissioner Satcher. Actually, an employee told me the other night when this happened, told me yesterday that everybody was totally stressed out. everybody was totally stressed out, everybody got dead silent in the war room, and you said that. And you don't know how much the employees appreciated that. So actually, that was what I had written down to say during, you maintained calm during a very tense time, and it really, the employees appreciated it. And this is Commissioner Satcher's district. So I'm relying on Commissioner Satcher and our chair to, you know, let us as a board know if there's any other, you know, issues. I expect to hear from Commissioner Satcher and our chair on what's going on, what our messaging is, what's going on. And you've been doing a good job, and I just want to assure that we're all on the same message and we're giving the same message to everyone, and that we all have the most current information. That's all I ask. And I'm going to rely on our district commissioner and our chair to do that. Thank you, that's all.
Madam Chair.
If I could comment right quick on what Commissioner Whitmore said. The first thing, one of the first things that Dr. Hope's did with Nick Azera was set up a program so that a press release would be done every day. And it would be done for the Board of County Commissioners, and it would be sent to all of us at the same time. So I know the last day or two, maybe it slowed down a little bit because it's gotten kind of crazy, but that policy is in place. And it's very important. And I will tell you that I have been asked, not by Dr. Hope's, but from other staff members, you know, "Is that something I should tell other commissioners?" And I said, "Absolutely. We all get the same information." So don't even think that that would not be the case. Yes, sir.
And thank you. I appreciate you bringing that up, Madam Chair. And Commissioner Whitmore, as you know, that was one of the first significant changes in communication, because I realized that there were emails going out, sometimes there were text messages. So we did set up a system, I think it was either Friday or first thing Saturday morning, where through the communications group, all commissioners, and we added mayors, whenever there's information going out, each commissioner gets an email, a text message, and an automated voice phone call simultaneously with that information. And so I think I'm adamant that we continue with that methodology because it provides for all modalities of communication. Some people look at their text messages the second it goes off at 2:00 in the morning. Some people don't read their emails at, you know, at regular intervals or it doesn't ding. And some people prefer a voice call. So fortunately, the technology was there, we just needed to set up the protocols. So that is an important change in the way your administrator directs communication with you. So everyone of you gets it at the same time, you get the same message, and you get it in all three modalities. And depending on the content, we're able to add mayors or directors or whoever else needs to get that communication. All I ask is if you're tired of getting it and you don't want it as frequently, let me know. I'm trying to accommodate you. So that's what came out of it, and I appreciate your comments because it really was a result of some of your phone calls to me that gave me the opportunity to think through what kind of a solution can we develop? And it was important, because that way, I only needed to communicate it once-
Right.
-to the Communication Department. And then if you have individual questions, you could call me. Because the first time I decided, okay, well, where do I start making calls? When does Karen, who does Karen call? And then it just dawned on me that we probably have technology, we just needed to organize it in a way to benefit from it. So thank you.
We haven't been getting them, so if somebody could, I mean, yeah. But you've given us an update, but maybe the next time.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I don't see Nick in the room, but.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bellamy?
Divine intervention is always good. Thank you, Pastor.
And always needed.
For the prayer. On Thursday, on Thursday when we spoke of this, you know, I really asked for all hands on deck. And what you have right now, where we are, is an example of what happens when all hands on deck. Our leadership from the state, all the way down to our staff, have stepped up to that call. And I think this is why we are where we are right now. And that was Thursday. Friday night was a bit cold at that press conference. It was a bit cold. We did have an opportunity to make sure we extended some communication to our community as far as where we are. And a great job by the county administrator on the briefing, as well as the entire weekend, as well as the entire weekend and the things that you've been communicating out. I did ask for a short timeline, but it's kind of answering itself now, as far as now that we have the resources and they're coming forth, and we're putting ourselves in a situation where we're almost on the other side of that critical concern. And I appreciate that. I think when we get the updated inundation maps, if we have the opportunity, with a little bit more prayer, if we have the opportunity to look at the other side, the quicker we can communicate that, you know, to our public, as far as the ones that have been evacuated. I've reached out, well, some of them have reached out to me with concerns. Some of them obviously didn't want to evacuate, some of them wanted to based on, you know, where they were within the map of concern. So I think once we have that updated inundation map, if we can communicate that to the public as quick as possible. So again, what we want to do is get past this. And I do echo what Commissioner Van Ostenbridge said as far as a disaster bringing, you know, us together. We actually celebrated his birthday in the war room. It's always great, you know, there's different personalities up here. You're always going to get some great laughs when you've got George and Kevin around as far as taking shots. But the most important thing, and all of us had in our eyes-
Making jokes.
Right, right, right. Not taking shots. Don't you all take that the wrong way. Making jokes toward each other. Thank you. Because that's what takes place. But one thing that I saw common was the concern and the care in everybody's eyes. As far as, A, we need to make sure that we are communicating with the public, we get on the same page. But more importantly, whatever safety concerns that are out there, we address them and make sure we alleviate those concerns. So my next steps from you would be asking, once we get the inundation maps, if we can take and communicate wherever we are to the public so we can make sure that we are continually progressing through this, if that's all right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I'm going to go next, and then I think Commissioner Servia is back online as well. I just wanted to kind of echo what has been said here. Commissioner Bellamy's right, and so is KVO and Commissioner Cruz. I will tell you that what I witnessed, and I was there every day, and what I witnessed was a county commission come together for the sake of our citizens and our county as a whole. And I was so proud of this board. And I will tell you that KVO, Commissioner Cruz, Commissioner Satcher, Commissioner Bellamy, every day, they didn't know it, but they were giving me support because I was tired. And you know what? They were always there to lend a hand, and two of them went up on, you know, Piney Point themselves and spent a lot of time. And I was going, "Why are you going up there? It's dangerous. Please don't go. Please don't go." But they did anyway. And it was because they were concerned. I would be remiss if I did not mention that Commissioner Whitmore was there yesterday and-
I was at a wedding the rest of the week.
Yeah, right.
Sorry. I wasn't missing enough of this.
But you were engaged.
You were engaged, might say.
Definitely engaged.
But, you know, it didn't matter to anybody that it was Easter. I mean, everybody was there because of the need of this county. And I've never seen a group come together and work together so diligently, and I was very proud. And I do want to say that I can tell you, I was with Nick Azera, and I know, I saw Nick come in, but I don't know where he is now. I was with Nick Azera most of the last few days, also with Chloe from Public Safety. And I will tell you, they were working as hard as they could go. So, you know, it was truly a group of staff members, commissioners, everybody came out. So it was great to see. Commissioner Servia, did you have something to add, ma'am?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. And just so you all know that I am there with you in spirit, I am still quarantined because I am still shedding the virus and I want to protect everyone. But yeah, I wish I could be there personally. I did want to just emphasize the, and you guys already know this, we are in the middle of our agricultural spring growing season, and our farmers are counting on fertilizer that they need from this area. And that those businesses have been paused during this evacuation period. So as soon as it is safe for them to get back to work, they really need to get back to work as soon as it's safe. So thank you for letting them know the minute it is, because hours and minutes are mattering to them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Van Ostenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just very quickly, wanted to explain why I went out to the Piney Point site. And honestly, why I was, you know, at EOC in the war room early in the morning and late at night. And it's, I've managed people in the past, and I always live by the mantra that I would never, ever ask you to do something that I was not willing to do myself. And those folks were, you know, in danger down there within that area. And I went down there essentially to show support and, you know, hopefully lift morale to some extent. They'd been out there for about 48 hours without sleep at that point. We did get a portuguese out there, so that's good. Yeah, and then we managed to get them a table and a tent. We didn't want to put too many assets out there because, you know, the idea was they would have to take off at the moment's notice. But anyway, the reason I was there is to show support and show them that I'm, same reason I'm doing shadowing employees on workdays as well, is to show you that I would never ask you to do something I'm not willing to do myself. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I don't have any other speakers on the board, any, no other commissioners, so I do have quite a few comment cards, so I'm going to go ahead and open this to public comment. The first is Andrea Griffin, then Glenn Jubalina, and after that Dale Colden.
Andrea Griffin, Manatee County. So over the, from Friday through the weekend, obviously, I was glued to the TV. I did see the county come together. Dr. Hope's, I was not a major supporter of you at all because of the school board issues. But I got to say, you were thrown into the fire. I thought you were very knowledgeable. I thought you brought people's frustration and unknown down a few levels. So I do want to thank you. I want to thank Jake Sowers because I saw how quickly he moved to another person that I don't support very much and just feel that, you know, thanks goes a long way, and when you do a good job, it should be rewarded. And I think they all, as well as the county commissioners, have done an excellent job in conveying messages to the county. But I'm frustrated. I'm frustrated that we're here. This could have killed somebody. This was a decision from this board for years. You guys chose to kick this can down the road over money. We have $30 million to spend on a land deal, but we didn't have a few million dollars to save lives in this county, and that's very concerning for me. We've played Russian roulette with this county and the residents of this county for over 18 years, and we were a day late and a dollar short. I heard on social media, it was James Satcher's fault. That's what I heard. I was arguing with somebody because it was your fault, a freshman-
It was Commissioner.
Commissioner. It was his fault that this is happening. I thought that was the stupidest thing I've ever heard in my life. Because the two, because one, out of the 18 years, one of the county commissioners has been on this board for 16 of those 18 years. She has chose to turn her head. She has chose to move money for her pet projects into accounts. Meanwhile, she risks residents' life, and I'm talking about Harold Whitmore. Ms. Whitmore, I'm very ashamed of you. This should have been resolved many years ago. You chose to fight it, even as far as just last Thursday, you were saying, "This is not the county's problems." Well, guess what? It's the county's problem now. You risked people's lives in this county. You did that. The other person that chose not to show up to any press conferences was Misty Servia. She's saying she's shedding viruses, but yet she can run an ad on her page saying that she will watch people's animals. Come to her house, drop your animal off. How about, if you're hungry, I'll make dinner for you. Come by and pick up the dinner. Yet she's shutting viruses and can't show up to a press conference. I'm very, very disappointed in our past board. I have not been silent about that. I think we need a change. I think we started with a great change by bringing on three freshman commissioners and retaining Vanessa. Vanessa, I want to thank you as well for taking the charge because you saw what people-
Thank you.
Some people on this board couldn't see at 16 years. Thank you.
Andrea, thank you for your comments. Glenn Jubalina? And then, as I said, Dale Colden. I hope I'm saying that correctly.
For the record, Glenn Jubalina, I didn't think I had to bring this shirt out of repairment, but apparently I do. So let me, let me start out that this is not a new problem. This goes back 25 years. This can has been kicked down. And I sent you all the information on this. So this is one fire that you've put out, one little fire. Millions of dollars, $200 million. What about the other 22 stacks that are in Manatee County and surrounding areas? 22 other potential catastrophes are waiting to happen. Have we even addressed that? Because it will happen. Those liners will not last forever. But there is, there is some silver lining. It's not the Mosaic silver lining, but it is silver lining. So you remember last time I came that we didn't have any money for veterans. Guess what? We got $6 million now. So I would suggest to this board, now that we don't have to write that check-
Yep, we do.
-to Tallahassee?
No, we do.
Okay. Well, I don't care how you find the money. That money is going to be reimbursed by the state. We need to find some money for the housing. The other thing I want to bring up, back in 2017, this board approved 3,400 additional acres of Mosaic 5.2. Robin and Charles Smith were the only two descending boats. So you perpetuated another disaster by allowing Mosaic to rape the land, build more stacks, have more catastrophic failures. Why aren't you telling them to start putting in some deep well ejections? This is a catastrophe waiting to happen, not one, but 22. I would also move that this board, that Mosaic are not good stewards. Give you an example, they've had over 67 EPA fines, and I did talk about that two years ago. Who puts $1 billion in their budget for fines? What business model puts $1 billion just for EPA fines? I would move that this board, we're worried about statutes across the street dragging them down? How about taking Mosaic's name off of every county building that their name is on? Because they are part of the problem. They has never been part of the solution. They will never be part of the solution. So they're trucking stuff out? That's surface, that's surface fluff. They're a disaster. You need to shut down mining in Manatee County like Sarasota County did. Thank you.
Thank you. Dale Colden? Dale? Oh, wait. Dale?
One of the advantages to being one of the-
I'm sorry, sir, would you state your name for the record?
My name is Dale Golden, a local resident, a local voter. Thank you. One of the benefits to being one of the more elderly members of the local population and still having a good memory. I remember growing up in the Northeast in the 1960s, and friends of mine who lived in Monroe, Louisiana, worked for companies by the name of Cargill and Agrico. I ask that all of you do a search on Cargill, Agrico, Mosaic, and look at the complex monster that we're dealing with here. It wouldn't surprise me if the liabilities of the management company of Piney Point, once they get hit with the liabilities, will likely bankrupt that little portion of the business. And of course, it's still our problem. My understanding as well is that the products of this- My understanding as well is that the products of this process are largely not needed by Florida, and frankly, phosphate fertilizers are not a good thing anyway when we have all the alternative organic and more healthy choices. But then again, these people are part of the poisoning syndicate that goes on within our company or within our country. I hear that this is a crisis of national proportion. It's all over the news. Every talking head in local government that had a place was out there for photo ops, and you're all sitting here today patting each other on the back about how great we all are because we gave up our Easter Sunday egg hunt to go out and hope that a 20-foot wave of water didn't drown the people that are there. Where are the CDC cancer rates for the areas that surround these dumps? When you go to the city of Apopka, they have a CDC cancer rate 20 times the national average. What's our cancer rate around here? I want to see it published. Bathers warnings, oh no. I mean, you know, there's tropical fish in this water, and it's mildly toxic. It's mostly saltwater. It's good for people to swim in. So please post those big things from the county. Welcome bathers, no problem here. Eat whatever seafood and shellfish comes out of these waters because it's only, it's being diluted, so it's not of any real risk. We don't get water tests and accountability from these dump sites. It's a big problem. It's all yours. Handle it.
Thank you, sir, for coming forward. I don't have any other cards on anyone. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to come forward and speak on this topic? Not seeing anyone. Do we have any phone calls, Seth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a friendly reminder, please press star nine if you'd like to speak on this item. And we do not have any calls, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Sorry, Seth is...
No, I couldn't hear you say it.
Sorry, I was getting an update.
Forgive me, Madam Chair. We do, we do have one caller now. It's 1-891-1-891. Please press star six. 1-891, star six. Hi caller, good morning. Please state your name for the record.
Good morning. Don Tideman for the record. I wasn't going to make any comments, but listening to some of the other public comments and the discussion, as a resident, I'm attempting to understand and follow not just the current situation at Piney Point, but the history of this situation in the making. And while I too appreciate every agency's response and effort and attempts to divert the worst-case situation that seemed to be at our doorstep just hours ago, I do remain confused about some of the framing that's being presented to the public about the response and the action that we're seeing now is perhaps heroic. Our new county admin said in his statements that it was due to the swift action of the current BOCC to declare a state of emergency, a declaration that came prior to the known breach, and that that's what drew the attention of and subsequent actions of all the parties currently involved on the local, state, and federal level. So this leaves me wondering, why did it take the worst case to appear imminent before any of this was prioritized by similar means? Did action not have been taken years ago when it was clear that HRK was unable to uphold its previous commitment to clean up the site and cap those stacks? And that the failure to maintain them would certainly result in immediate threat that we're living through now? It appears to me, as another commenter said, that there is a lot of back patting and verbal accolades for doing something now when there is no option to not respond when all the same officials, local, federal, and state, could have done something previously to avoid the environmental disaster that's currently unfolding. So, in my mind, this isn't a disaster averted, there's still a disaster unfolding, and one that possibly could have and maybe should have drawn the state to act before now under multiple administrations previously. So again, while I'm grateful that something is being done as opposed to nothing considering the current state of things, I find it hard to celebrate the way our county admin or even our chair seems to want to do because what is happening now, even without the total collapse of the stack on the property, should never have been allowed to reach this critical point. I read in the Bradenton Herald that the, that there were reports that HRK representatives had sent warnings to DEP about critical lining tears and degradation of the integrity of the stacks at least three times between July and December. What the governor has done recently, deploying funds, assets, DEP, and what Congressman Buchanan did in requesting assistance with the Army Corps and EPA, and I don't know why he did that and not the governor, but my question is, why could none of this been done prior? Why could an effort have not been made prior to now to bring in the best scientists and engineers and the funding to address this disaster and waiting before hundreds of millions of gallons of non-marine quality water were being dumped untreated into the bay prior to homes being evacuated and livelihoods threatened in this imminent way? But with all due respect, I have a hard time listening to all the bravos and attaboys being exchanged amongst all of my elected officials at all levels when the real heroic and appropriate action would have been to respond with such urgency and ferocity prior to this point.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are narratives, as in
Seth, are there any other calls, please, sir?
No, ma'am. That's all the calls we have.
Okay. We do have a couple of commissioners and myself that will respond to public comment. Commissioner Whitmore.
Just real quick, I'm sure everybody up here received a couple of emails last night saying, and it's kind of, kind of what the speaker up here had said, that Carol Whitmore is responsible for that. She's been in office for 30 years, so I've been a county commissioner since 2006. Yes, I was in politics on the island, but this was never discussed at an island meeting ever. So, and you were asked to write the governor and ask him to remove me from office. Well, I've gotten so many emails of people that have gotten it that were really upset. Also, there was another email that, I didn't read it because I don't read them because it's an attack ad with PAC, and they're trying to get rid of me, and that's fine. But Betsy and I were responsible for this. Well, on, one of the media last night, they counted how many people were in office since I've been here in 2006, and there's about 30-something or more other elected officials besides Carol Whitmore. I've actually asked to have this on the legislative agenda in 2017 because of the hurricane. And meeting, me meeting with staff, actually, the staff that I met with are right here in the office, and we spent all afternoon. And then I went to our chair at the time, Steve Johnson, and asked him if we could put this on our legislative agenda. So, and we have all been to Tallahassee. Joe McClash called me yesterday because he was involved when we did do the dredging into Piney Point, and he was the chair of the port then. So, you know, this, we've been working on this for many years. We just haven't been able to get anywhere. And unfortunately, it took this, this terrible event to happen to get somewhere. So no, Carol Whitmore has not been involved with this for 30 years. But I'm, I'm here now, and it's my responsibility as well as everybody on this board to get this resolved and help the state and HRK get this closed. And so, that's where that was coming from. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, for an announcement, as you know, things are moving rather quickly around Piney Point.
Yes, thank you.
And just on that note, I would just like to reiterate again with the public, Piney Point is a privately owned property.
Thank you.
It is not under the jurisdiction of our oversight. It is the state government and it is the federal government. This commission can merely ask for the legislature to provide resources. Madam Chair, as I mentioned earlier this morning, and in response to Commissioner Whitmore, we are all going to get this information at the same time. I am pleased to announce that state and local officials are confident in the latest Piney Point outflow modeling to immediately reopen US 41. The statement that will be going out is after a preliminary meeting on developments at Piney Point with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Department of Environmental Protection, and the Department of Emergency Management, Manatee County Public Safety officials feel confident to reopen US 41. Highway 41 was shut down last week as part of a broad evacuation zone that is still in effect. Homes inside the evacuation zone are still under a mandatory evacuation, but US 41 will reopen immediately. All surrounding roads still remain closed. State and local agencies involved in the Piney Point response will host a press conference today, April 6th, at 4:00 p.m. to announce additional developments that take place during the day. Residents with questions about the evacuation zone can call Manatee County's call center at 311. Additionally, the Department of Environmental Protection has created an informational website about the Piney Point discharge. The site can be found at www.protectingfloritogether.gov/pineypointupdate. In order to avoid confusion and to make sure consistent messaging occurs, all media updates will be provided during the press conference and on the county's two primary Twitter feeds, at MCG Public Safety and at Manatee Gov, it's probably, well, Manatee Gov, oh, at the Twitter. In addition to that, members, we will be getting new information at 2:00 today, and our public safety team and others will be taking that information and redrawing the evacuation area. I expect it to be compressed, and that will be announced at 4:00. And Madam Chair, may, I suggest that we take a recess before we take up the following agenda item around the resolution.
I was already going to do that.
Thank you. We're on the same page.
I'm next, just a moment. Just a moment, I'm next.
This was about this?
I want to respond to the citizen that called.
Which one?
You know, I'm holding in my hand, actually, an article from the Bradenton Herald, and I'm not going to mention any of our names. You can look back, you can check it out yourself, but I'll just read it. Quote, "HRK and the state of Florida own this problem. The county does not own this problem. It is not a port issue." Who was chair of the Port Authority at the time, said, "Agreed that Piney Point is a state and HRK problem, but that Piney Point is also a county issue. Piney Point is an accident waiting to happen. We are responsible to our residents, and we need to understand what is going on out there." So, for anyone that thinks that this board, or previous boards, I should say, did not try to address this issue would be totally incorrect. I just want to make that statement. The press has covered it, your own local newspaper that you talk about, that you heard from, has covered it in the past. The quotes are in there. So, we need to understand that this board has not been blind to this issue. So, thank you. Commissioner Whitmore.
Just real quick, I've been asked to, and that's why we're all here, we need to all have the same message, like I said before. I've been asked by a media to speak, and I, I'm sending this to Scott and Nick to not, but I need to make sure that that's a consensus of the board, that we direct any interviews or anything. I mean, I know the immediate emergency is probably almost over, but that was the direction in the last few days, so I want to make sure that's the direction of the board to send it to Scott or, I mean, Dr. Hopes or Nick. Am I correct?
I think that, speaking for the board as chairman, I mean, that's been the rule since day one.
Yeah, I haven't spoken.
Dr. Hopes is the one that's handling the state of emergency.
Okay, so I'm sending it to you and Nick, and you can deal with the media. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Bellamy.
Yeah, I just want to touch on that as far as the media requests that we are receiving. We all feel that we need to have, one, extended communication, and protocol allows that to come from our county administrator. I think it's very important for media to understand, if you are reaching out to us, you know, requesting Zoom or requesting a comment and things like that, that our protocol is to refer you all to our Public Information Officer or our county administrator, because we do not want the people that we serve to be confused or misled. So I think it's important for us to have one voice and to make sure that voice is consistent with strength in data, so the information that goes out can be vetted and then everything is going in the right direction. So, when that took place for me the last couple of times, I've actually extended the request to Nick. And Mr. Administrator, if you want me to involve you, I will follow your lead on that. But I think it's very important as county commissioners that we follow that protocol and that the Public Information Officer handle that communication from this point forward.
Right. Totally agree. Commissioner Servia?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a few comments to follow up on public comment. You know, we consistently hear from one individual that is in such an utter dark place, spreading misery.
We're not going to discuss residents of this county, please, Commissioner.
But this is not a time, this is not a time to cast blame. This is a time to come together. And as you stated, Chairman Ball, you know, Piney Point is privately owned. It has been under the responsibility of the Florida Department of Environmental Protection since the Mulberry Corporation abandoned the site more than 20 years ago. And our Board of County Commissioners has consistently made it a priority to ask the state to please help us to get this closed, and we are finally there. So I'm so thankful for that. And I do want to follow up and say that, yes, any family or business who needs assistance, who has had to evacuate, you are more than welcome to reach out to me. I will put you in touch with resources that I have. I will get a meal delivered to you. I will help you with fostering your cats, if that's helpful. So please don't hesitate to reach out to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else on the board. Do you have anyone? No. Okay. Public comment is now closed. We are going to take a 10-minute recess, and then we'll come back, and we have a couple of motions to go with this item, and then we'll get into our proclamations. Thank you. We're in recess.[1601.23] We're in recess. Mr. County Administrator, do you want to make a comment?
Yes, Madam Chair. The background of this, the firm that is mentioned is the firm that had done the design work and the engineering and testing when this commission...
2013?
2013 had taken up the issue. This is a result of the Secretary of DEP and a discussion we had about basically expediting a permit process in addition to using funds available during a state of emergency from the Department of Emergency Management Services in anticipation of the probable need when DEP begins to process the water for disposal at the remaining ponds.
Yes.
This piece of property is a piece of property that is currently owned by the county, that is right across the street from Piney Point on Buckeye Road. From my understanding of the history with regards to Board of County Commissioners, one of the concerns around a deep injection well was that the county wanted control over what went down that well and when that well would be used, given the fact that we're in a state of emergency and funding is being made available through that emergency from the state, and DEP is willing to expedite the permitting process. This is an opportunity for the county, on county-owned property, to place that well, which gives the county and future county commissions total control over the use of that well in order to follow those guidelines. And this is for the design work, of course, before the well is constructed, it would come back to this board for review of the plan and to then authorize the contract. So this is the initial step, which will get us to a point of getting the engineering done, the core drilling done, in preparation of that, Madam Chair.
But a contract has not been chosen as far as who will be putting in the...
Correct.
Okay. And then, one thing that I'm hearing from a lot of people, too, we will discuss later as to whether or not this well will be sealed...
Correct.
...after the water is dispersed. Is that correct?
What, this motion gives this county commission and future county commissions total control over that well within the guidelines of the EPA and the DEP.
Okay. Commissioner Van Austin Bridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is another example of leadership that the doctor has shown. He got a quick crash course of the history of this debate in the war room and, you know, took what previously the board had discussed, what their intentions were regarding a well, and ran with it, and he has brought us, I think, exactly what the board wanted, which is full board control over the well, what goes down the well, and the future of that well. So we will have full ownership and control over the well, and I thank you for arranging it in that manner. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cruz?
Do we have an idea of what the timing's going to be until we get to a stage where this well is operational? I know we talked about using the company from Wyoming and putting excess water in tanks for the time being. Presumably, those tanks would eventually be drained into this well, so we don't just have endless tanks sitting there, which is just kind of Piney Point light. Do we have an idea of timing of this well?
Commissioner, I'm smiling because I've heard, the timing's been all over the map. I've heard weeks, I've heard months, I've heard a year. The sooner we can get an engineer in here, the better I'll be able to respond to that. But this is, in my, in my opinion, the most effective way and the most timely way to approach this. I know there was an issue about future use of the property. I'd like to just mention that, basically, the property will just have the wellhead on it. It's my expectation that all the processing, the pumping, the filtering, before it goes to the well, will be done on the Piney Point site, and we will have the well and the wellhead, and you can build businesses around it. And so I do think, in my opinion, that this is the most effective approach.
I agree. And we spoke about that yesterday, because I was actually meeting with the EDC when this update came through, and I was like, oh, yeah, that's, I think that's where the well's going. But everyone was happy to hear that it's just a wellhead, and it's going to be on our property, and it's going to be in our control, which has been a little different than what some of the previous boards have expected. And one of the concerns of the people of Manatee County, that this just became a revenue generator for whatever private company we hired to dump whatever they want down it. So I think everyone's appreciative. I think, at the end of the day, this is a best-case solution to a worst-case problem, really. So, nice work. Thank you.
Yes, and Madam Chair, it also allows us to dictate the quality of the water before it goes into the well.
Correct. And I'm very happy about that, for sure.
Yeah, so I do believe this approach should address most of the concerns, both in the community and on the commission.
Yeah. Personally, I'm very glad the water's going to be cleaned, you know, as much as possible before it goes into the well. A lot of citizens have been very concerned. I know the Farm Bureau has been concerned, our farmers have been concerned. Anytime you're going down near the aquifer, that's not a great situation. But under the circumstance that we are now in...
Through the aquifer.
We don't have a choice. And I think it goes, you know, it's very important that the citizens understand, too, that this is not something that's going to just be handed over to, like, public utilities for them to run as they see fit either. This needs to be just this water. All right, Commissioner Whitmore?
We have a deep well right next to Cortez Village, and a lot of people don't even realize it's there, so they can be very non-apprertrusive. And if I recall, under the aquifer, then there's an 800-foot layer that this dark deep well's going into, correct? And I think you all confirmed it on your trip with the Secretary of DEP, or somebody that was there that day, that the water will go west. Yes, into the Gulf in about 20 or 30, yeah, years. Okay, all right. But that's where the water travels, correct? You all got that confirmed by DEP?
Yes, if I may, so the aquifer flows, the lower aquifer flows westward at 10 to 15 feet per year. It would roughly, Charlie Huntsman and I's discussion, 217 miles into the Gulf before it would surface, and according to our, at least my public school math, that puts it about 100,000 years before it would get there.
Good. I went to the same school. Good. I just have a question. On our information we have here says, usually you have the fund source and all that, it says no cost in fund source. So the funds are, got to ask that question, because I won't know how to tell somebody if I don't ask.
Madam Chair? My understanding in my discussion with Secretary Wallenstein is that he has committed that his department will expedite the permitting process, and he will arrange through the Emergency Management Services and the Governor's Office for funds for this to come out of this state of emergency.
Oh, thank you. That's, that's good news.
The best I can do for you.
Big news for us. That's the best you can do. Thank you.
It should be noted, however, that in my conversation yesterday with the Senator, that the $6 million that we had said that we would put forward, we will still be held for that through the state, but not necessarily just putting it on the injection well, but in the overall process of the whole thing. So...
I was told that way.
I'll work on...
Small price to pay to get rid of this issue.
We're in a pretty good position to negotiate.
Right, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion, I'm sorry, Commissioner Servia, did you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman, and I have the same question.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman, and I have the same questions about, about who is going to pay for this and how that's going to work. So I'm happy to hear that the state of Florida is taking full responsibility for that. I do have a question about the local permitting process. Is there one? I, I remember at the 2014 timeframe, when we went through the deep well then, we did require a, a local permitting process.
No.
So I'm assuming there's one for this as well. And I remember, it took about 18 months back then, if I remember correctly, to get everything in place. My next question is for Mr. Clegg regarding liability. Are we assuming any liability at all by taking this step?
Good point.
Jeff, do you want to go first on the permitting issue?
Whichever works best.
I, I think I can address both questions. Madam Chair Commissioners, there is no local permitting approval for a deep well. It is under the exclusive jurisdiction of DEP, under, I think, Chapter 414 Florida statutes. It's considered a pollution control measure, so we do not have local permitting authority over it. What happened back in 2013 is that we went through the process to get that state permit, and it was pretty rough, and it, it normally does take a long time, about six months. So the hope is that by doing this under the auspices of an emergency, that, that time period can be shortened. In terms of liability, yes, we do have liability for anything we own. I mean, if, that's just the way the world works. The confidence level that engineers have in deep wells and the track record that they have is pretty good, but that doesn't mean that it's foolproof or, foolproof or without some level of residual risk. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
If I may just expound on Commissioner Servia's question and Mr. Clegg's response.
State your name.
I'm sorry, Jeff Goodwin, Deputy Director of Utilities.
Thank you.
So what Commissioner Servia is remembering most likely is the public hearing process. The bare minimum is we have to advertise for a public hearing, and if no one requests it, then it's not required, but if someone does, it is required. In 2014, we opted to go ahead and have the public hearing regardless of the request or not, because we thought it was important to get it in front of the public. The current permitting process takes about 12 months. Used to be six months, it's now 12 months, but we understand that the department is expediting and accelerating, so.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
And Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just to expedite this, I will remind you, it'll be coming back before the board when you approve a contractor to actually start putting it in, so there'll be a couple stops.
All right. Any other comments, Commissioners, before we vote? Commissioner Thatcher?
Just...
Oh, I've got to go to public comment, too. Yeah. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Does that put us in any, any kind of, would we be in a stronger position to get this done faster and, of course, worst-case scenario would be if someone changed their mind as far as funding. Is there a way we could vote for both today, to approve the, you know, assuming it goes through the procurement process that we have set up? In other words, so there's nothing keeping them from going ahead and getting this done, because it's what needs to happen?
It will happen.
Yeah, I...
Procurement.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I, I'm confident this is going to happen. I mean, the, the team that is on the ground right now are all the relevant parties involved in resolving the problem that we have at Piney Point, and, and this is one factor, and that's why I think the offer was made to us, because when it comes time to process that water for the remaining ponds and to dispose of it anyplace other than Tampa Bay, they would like to have as many options available and ready. So I, 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 I am confident that, that both from the federal level and the state level, they are focused on, and the words of the, the Secretary, they are not leaving, they are not leaving Piney Point until it has permanently been resolved. Not a hope for it to be resolved, not a, a, a projection that it's going to be resolved. They have committed that they will be on this site until, and the Governor himself, that, that this will be permanently resolved and we will not have to come back to it. And this is a very important step that the commission can take to facilitate that. Madam Chair.
Good. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open this up to public comment. Anyone like to come forward and speak on this issue of the injection well? Yes, sir. Come on down, state your name, you'll have three minutes.
I'm Gary Reader. Hi, Manatee County Farm Bureau. I've been before y'all before, not before this board, but before boards in the past. The well's going to go in, I understand that. If we can have the understanding that Manatee County is not going to be a commercial dump site for some other entities coming in here, I think we're going to be okay with that. We're going to clean the water, take it down there, it's the best way to get rid of it at this point. I'd rather see that than getting it dumped into the bay.
Okay.
Excuse me. This is all something that we've talked about for several, several times. It may not be this board, it may not be this administration, but one way, one way or another down the road, there could be a possibility, unless it's stated now and put in the, in the, in the letter now, that it has to be sealed after the water's gone down.
I agree.
You and I have talked about this on several occasions. We've all talked about this.
Yes, we have. Many times.
It does not, Manatee County does not become, need to become, a dump site for other entities.
Right. I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reader, and thank you for being so active, too, in, in this, you've, I've had several conversations with you recently. Anyone else from the public want to come forward on this issue? Seth, any phone calls?
Yes, ma'am. 1-891-89, excuse me, please press star six. Hi caller, please state your name for the record.
Don Ketterman. I, I had a question about the well that I hoped somebody could maybe clarify, and also I was unable to finish my previous comments, and, and Madam Chairwoman, you directed a response to me, and so I hope that I could give some clarification, because I timed out before I could finish what I was saying. And I just wanted to make it clear that I was not in any way intending to, to place blame on the Board of County Commission. I want to assure you that I'm not entirely ignorant of the board's previous attempts to find a solution or prioritize Piney Point, and it wasn't my intention to say they hadn't, because that assertion would be untrue, in my opinion. But what I intended to express was that there are narratives underway online and in mass emailers that place the blame for all of this on the B.O.C.C. or, more absurdly, on two specific members of the B.O.C. or former B.O.C., and it seems the basic facts reveal from what I can tell, whatever failure to action was largely beyond the control or the jurisdiction of this board or the former board, and so I personally question other authorities in action, not the B.O.C.C. I didn't mean to imply blame.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, I have a question. May I ask my question?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So, on the well, I understand, I watched previously in the year, Madam Chairwoman, where you were not particularly thrilled with the idea of the well, and I know that in 2014, you also were not in support of the well option, and I understand, I think, your reasoning for why. And so, too, there still remains among the public and myself some concern about the option of the well, and I understand why it's, we're kind of to a point now where something needs to happen. But I'm just wondering if you could share with me, because it might provide me some more clarity and comfort on the option of the well, what would change your position about that now? Is there something different in the way the well is going to be, what's the word? Engineered or, or utilized that is different than the previous proposals? Is the cleaning the water first something different or new? So, thank you.
I'll go ahead real quick and respond. Ms. Ketterman, the reason that I've never been in favor of a deep-water injection well because, is because, number one, there were other alternatives that could be used, so we didn't have to put contaminated water down that could end up violating our aquifer, which would very much probably affect the water that you drink. So, and once that happens, there's no correcting it. So, no, ma'am, I was never in favor of a deep water. I'm not today. But I will tell you, the difference today is that, number one, obviously, I don't, to my knowledge, the Board of County Commissioners has never voted for a deep-water injection well until now. I don't think it was ever approved, as I can recall, since I've been on the board. Number two, the, the main thing here is that this water will be cleaned before it's put down the well. So we do have a little added protection there for our aquifer. There have been three deep-water injection wells that have been violated in the state of Florida. We did hear that from DEP when we were there. So for me, this is a comfort, knowing that that water will be cleaned before it's put down near our aquifer. That is the difference for me. But thank you for calling. Sean, is there anybody else on the phone?
That's all we have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right. I'll go ahead and close public comment. Mr. County Administrator and then Commissioner Van Austinbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I, and I want to make a comment. This, I think you related to it with regards to the Farm Bureau and our agriculture industry. Under, under this structure, we can determine the quality of the water before it goes into the well, and just for an example, spent many, many years in, in Homestead, Florida, and, and I'm fully aware that there are a number of certifying agencies, et cetera, that certify agricultural products based on everything from proximity to non, you know, to GMO fields and, and things like that, and there is a sensitivity with regards to effluent that goes into wells, et cetera, and this does allow for the Board of County Commissioners to regulate what the water standard is before it goes into the well, so that it does not put our, our agricultural partners, our farmers, at any risk with regards to the quality of, of their, their annual production of produce and, and products. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And that's so important. Commissioner Van Austinbridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and just so folks are clear, that, you know, in the long discussions you and I have had about Piney Point, your opposition was not to cleaning up the site, it was to a deep well, and we're fortunate, actually, that you were pushing for a filtration system, because the company that you were pushing us to use to filter is actually already on-site at Piney Point, and they're setting up, and they will begin processing, filtering water and putting clean water into the bay, I, what I understand, within 24 hours. They'll be, they'll be doing thousands of gallons a minute, if not tens of thousands of gallons a minute. And on that note, we do control what goes down the well, and, which means that we control the quality of the water that goes down the well, and it is at least my position that we not take water straight from the pond and send it straight down the well. The water is, in my hope, to be treated before it goes down the well, and hopefully I have the support of the board for that. I understand it may delay, you know, things a little bit, so depending on the time sensitivity of it, I hope that we will do everything that we can in our power to treat the water before it goes down the well. So just, just sort of clear things up a little bit. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner, thank you for saying that, and, you know, it should be noted, I worked very hard over the years since I've been on this board to get Piney Point cleaned up, because I knew it was a disaster waiting to happen. Gary Reader and I have had many numerous conversations on that. I have been to Tallahassee on numerous occasions. I have been to DC on Piney Point, trying to come up with the best way to be able to get this cleaned and done and taken care of, so we, this board and none of our citizens would have to worry about this again. So for me, this has been very traumatic, knowing what's been going on, but at the same time, I am relieved in that our county administrator has worked with the state, and we do have a good solution. So Commissioner Whitmore?
Just real quick, my intent always, and I think the board's intent was, and, and Gary, we were involved with this, we were afraid that they were going to use their bleach byproducts and stick it down there also, and we didn't want that. But I, my intent always was, this is for a single source, and that's from Piney Point and Dr. Hope's. If the state tells us that we can't take our sweet time, you know, I'm worried about the other two. You know, the other, the first one is more compatible, but, but isn't the state going to tell us, I mean, if we're, if we want every drop of water in the other two stacks to be treated, isn't that a state decision environmentally? I mean, who's paying the bill? I mean, if the state's paying it and they say, well, we need another three or four years to treat all the water in the others, I mean, that's something we all need to look at, but I am 100% single source, nothing, and that's what you, as the farm industry, wanted, a single source. They didn't say what the quality was, they wanted a single source. So that's where I stand, and we, we can talk about all that stuff later. All right, let's vote. Yeah.
Well...
It's unanimous.
It might if it takes years.
Excuse, well, it's, it's safe, suffice it to say, DEP has awarded the contract...
Thank you.
...to get the water cleaned, so it's, it's being done. So on that note, I can't remember now, we haven't voted on the motion, have we?
No.
Yeah. Jeez. On that note, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Miss K, I'm sorry, honey, I didn't hear you.
I said aye.
Okay.
I said aye.
It is approved, Madam Clerk unanimously.
Thank God, now it's your proclamation.
All right. We are going to, yes, sir, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to make two quick comments before we move to the next item. One, I gave you the wrong statutory site. It's Chapter 403, and I'm not sure if anybody wants to look it up, but I just want to correct myself.
That's true.
Yeah, yeah, it's good, George. Okay. Sorry, but...
Never a dull moment.
And also, unrelated to this, we have a, there's a signing for a port bond issue tomorrow, and Assistant County Attorney Alex Nicodemus is going to be bringing around to you in a moment, a sunshine certificate to sign that just says you haven't talked about the bonds outside of the sunshine, it's routine, so when you see that come around for your signature, that's the reason for it.
It's on the agenda.
That's all I have. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. No, 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 not at all. All right, we're going to go ahead and open up and handle proclamations. What is the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
Okay.
We have a motion by Commissioner Whitmore, a second by Commissioner Cruz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, proclamations are approved. Yes, sir.
All right, Madam Chair, I just wanted to make note that under proclamations, item number 12 will be deferred to the 20th. That party had to, had to leave earlier. So item number 12 under proclamations will be deferred to April 20th, 2021.
Thank you, sir.
Want this?
All right, we'll start with adoption and presentation of proclamation designated, designating April 4th through the 10th, 2021, as National Library Week in Manatee County. Commissioner Bellamy.
I'm ready to wait for no one.
I am cold.
All right, ready, Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir, we're ready.
I know, ma'am, about me.
I'm sure they are.
Proclamation, Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, whereas libraries of all types are at the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and campuses, serving all, all their communities, serving their communities, whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of belonging to the community. Whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building, and everyone is welcome to use their resources. And whereas for people liking broadband at home, libraries provide access to computers and Wi-Fi, even checking out Internet hotspots. And whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to explore new worlds and become their best selves through access to technology, multimedia content, and educational programs. And whereas in times of crisis, libraries, librarians, and library workers play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in person and virtually. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender, identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that April 4th through 10th, 2021 shall be known, designated, and set aside as National Library Week in Manatee County. as National Library Week in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with the quorum present and voting on the 6th day of April, 2020. Who will be receiving this?
Eva Edie, Neighborhood Services Department, and as you can imagine, this is one of my favorite weeks, and I'm glad to bring some positive to this meeting. And before I turn it over to our great library management team and our two dedicated, two of our dedicated library advisory board team members, I wanted to say to each of you, thank you very kindly. Thank you for accepting our invitation and working with us to inspire young readers. Reading to them, reading to our local children as video presentations, and creating read posters is wonderful, and as leaders, I am so very, very grateful for all of you to continue to inspire readers. And County Administrator, I look forward to you joining us in that effort, and I'm going to turn this over to our management team.
Hi, Elizabeth Partridge, Library Services Manager. Thank you all. I want to tell everybody, because we went through all of you very quickly, coming into all of the different locations to film actually reading stories, to a bunch of adults rather than kids this time, since we're not doing Storytime, it was a different flavor. So we tried to be childlike, but it was a little hard for us. So we appreciate you coming and all the enthusiasm and support that you've given to libraries. We can't thank you enough. I want to introduce also our Assistant Library Manager, and then we'll introduce our two trustee members who have come also...